I should keep staring at me.
We are up. All right.
Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Well County School District 6 on this, the ninth day of November 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand with me and join us for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, we are now in our 12th week of school. I think it's our 12th week of school. We've been in 12 weeks then, one or the other, and we're incredibly thankful to still be open. We continue to hear that from our community members, how thankful they are for this school district, so thankful that their kids are in school and so thankful that we are open. And one of the things that we have learned, or at least we've come to believe, what our health agencies are telling us is that the safest place for kids to be is in school. And that is backed up by the numbers that we see. We just received a report from Dr. Pilch, our superintendent, telling us that we're seeing very little transmission, very little numbers of positive cases in our schools. And yet, even with some 90-plus students who actively are sick with COVID-19, we've had to quarantine around somewhere between 1,500 and 1,800 kids. And so, I would just put this out again to our community to please help us, because we can't stay open as a school district if our teachers are continually quarantined. We now have three schools that are fully remote, not because they have too much sickness in their schools. That is not the case, because we cannot keep teachers. We don't have enough staff to run the school on a daily basis. And so, they've had to go fully remote, and we know, one, that's tremendously difficult for our staff, for our teachers. That's equally difficult for our children, for our students. As good as it is, and as good a substitute as it is, it is a substitute and not nearly the quality education that they get in person. And so, we just want to put that out to our community again, to do what's necessary, to help us stay open. We're depending on you, and so, if you can do what our health officials are asking us to do, to wear masks, to distance, to... Now, they're asking us to limit our social interactions and for the next two weeks, leading up to Thanksgiving, I think it's incredibly important for us to think about every interaction that we have and assume that everyone is potentially sick, potentially carrying this virus. So, we just would continue to ask for your help and your support as a community, to help us stay open, to help us to continue to educate children well. So, one last thing I want to bring up is that this is the week of Veterans' Day, and two days we'll have Veterans' Day. And so, we want to say thank you to all of our veterans out there, and we want to say a special thank you to Mr. Tally, who's sitting to my left, who is National Guard member. And so, thank you for your service, Mr. Tally. We appreciate you and all of our veterans out there, especially always, but especially this week. We're now to the portion of our meeting for public participation regarding our agenda items, and we have one person coming to speak tonight, and that's Mr. Josh Wayne Scott, on the subject of school and community concerns around COVID-19. We welcome comments from our community members, and we dedicate this portion of the agenda for that opportunity. If anyone wants to submit testimony or handouts, they can do that to our board secretary. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide any immediate response to input, but we'll ask district staff to respond appropriately. And this board is committed to providing a safe environment where members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. With that, Mr. Wayne Scott, you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board and Superintendent Pilch. I'd like to thank you all first for the survey that came out, even if it might be a little later than I was hoping that it might have been here. And even if it was only available to Internet users, which I know is a problem that we were having to go with this, I would like to ask that when those results become finalized, that you go ahead and publish those out to the public as well. We would love to hear what our community actually has to say as well. Based on some information that we had, previously 10% for a community rating was what we had determined is something that is very concerning and we need to look at as a district. Based on that, we've blown past this. We're over that 13% mark, and based off of our district's website, we've got 57 cohorts out, 1,492 students, 243 staff, and six schools that have been said to be remote. Now, the reason that we were asking to go back was because it was consistency for students, consistency for children. But when kids are going out two weeks at a time and not knowing what's supposed to be happening, this isn't consistency. So, give us some information about what's going to come up. And just saying, "Well, hope that we can do that" is not good enough, because parents need to plan for childcare. Parents need to plan if they're going to be gone for two weeks. That's a big deal. So, what is the plan? This last spike started around when we had our last cold snap. Everybody had to go indoors. What happens when it gets really cold and we all have to go inside? Remember, prior planning prevents piss-poor performance. We want to do that. We want to make sure that if we have to go remote, that we are doing everything we can to have prior planning. And the online school program that's going right now wasn't given a whole lot of planning and thought. We need to make sure that the rest of the kids that get to go remote get a better job done than what our online students are receiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. Next item on our agenda is our work session report. Ms. Crane, I'll give this to you.
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and meeting dates. Superintendent Dr. Deirdre Pilch provided an update on COVID-19. The board briefly discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pilch, this is your portion.
Well, thank you, President Matthews. Wow, we're moving quickly, aren't we? Let me get over there. The first one I can absolutely remember without even seeing it on here. I want to recognize Ms. Lori McCarty, our Coordinator for Health Services. As you all heard earlier this evening, that Ms. McCarty has been selected as the Administrator of the Year by the Colorado Association of School Nurses. This is, you know, a high honor for her to receive in any year, but this year it is so well-deserved, because we are one of the larger districts that did come back fully in person, which meant Ms. McCarty and her team had to step up in ways that were truly of superhero nature. So, congratulations to her. We're so proud of her, and it's so well-deserved, and such a tribute to her and her whole team who've been working so hard as we have worked to keep schools open and had to quarantine and manage those who are quarantined. I want to talk just a moment about quarantines, maybe in support of Mrs. McCarty, but I just have to say it again to anyone who might listen or find this on YouTube. If you are sick, or someone in your home is sick with symptoms that might be COVID, so cough, sore throat, headache, stuffy nose, vomiting, diarrhea, if you are sick, someone in your home is sick, keep your children home and stay home yourself until those symptoms clear, or you have another diagnosis or a negative COVID test. If you are being tested for COVID, or someone in your home is being tested for COVID because of an exposure or because of symptoms, so I'm not talking about like the asymptomatic testing we do here in the district, but you're waiting on a COVID test because you have an exposure symptoms, you must stay home and you must keep your children at home for school during that time. We are seeing a significant number of our cases where we, once we learn the child is positive, there was someone else in the home being tested for COVID, or who had been exposed to COVID or had COVID, and that child was still sent to school. So, please, 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 help us with this piece so we can stay open. And then, I too want to recognize Veterans' Day, although you did, and just, you know, some of my best friends are veterans, and I know that Brian Lamos, who's helping present tonight, albeit remotely, is a veteran, and many of our employees are, and just thank you, Mr. Tally, and thank you to the other vets here in our community. We got to tour Greeley West High School's site last week. So, a group of us, most of the cabinet members, met out at Greeley West and had the opportunity to tour the new site. And I know you all are right now writing notes, like, "I want to tour the new site." I know you do. We will get you out there with us, you know, and it was so fun, and it was on Tuesday, Election Day. So, it was so fun for us to recall that one year ago, prior to that date, we were actually campaigning to pass this bond issue that would allow us to replace Greeley West High School. It's going to be a beautiful school, and we are going to do a great job with our taxpayer dollars. We are on budget, we're on time, and it's just very, very exciting to be out there, especially on Election Day. And then, finally, I just want to say, thank you for the time that you allowed for me to give the COVID update. I want to say again, in case people didn't tune into that, that I know folks are frustrated by this 10, that kind of 10% positivity being the marker for which we would go remote. And it certainly was the marker in July, August, and September. And then, new guidance came out in October from CDPHE that said, "Look at what's going on in your own schools and what's going on in your district, and follow that data," rather than simply following the community data. And even the health officials here in our community are saying, "What's happening in your schools?" rather than just looking to see what's happening in our community. And then, I want to promise this, that if at any point, the health officials are saying to us, "By having school open and having most kids in school and most staff in school, we are increasing the, we are increasing the spread in the community. We're impacting hospitalizations in a negative way." We absolutely will change course and adjust as we need to. You know, we're watching all of that data, as you know. And I apologize to our staff who are so frustrated by the data moving and kind of, I've been told that the target has moved, and the target has moved. And I apologize for that, and I am sorry about that. I'm sorry that has been so frustrating to staff, that is, staff have watched this. They assumed there was a, you know, cutoff in which we would say, "Okay, that's it. We're going remote." And it, as the information from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has changed, and guidance from health officials here in our own community, we've had to change also, and it's not as cut and dried as that 10%. So, you know, having said that, we're going to keep watching the data very carefully and the numbers, and I know we'll know when it's the right time to send everybody remote, and that that's the best thing to do for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Our next item is to approve an agenda for tonight. This is an action item, and we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We also need to approve our consent agenda for tonight, and just as a reminder, our consent agenda are things that we've, we agree, don't need any discussion or comment from board members, and we need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on our consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business are the revisions to policy JEB, entrance age requirements. And this is an action item, so we'll need a motion for this one as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the revisions to policy JEB, entrance age requirements as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. This looks pretty straightforward, but, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to tell us before we open this up for discussion from board members?
You have the comment in there. It's really straightforward. This is all good news. I'll just say that.
Are there any other comments or questions for Dr. Pilch on this agenda item? Mr. Tally, sorry.
I think I have a question. Well, I know I have a question, but on it, it does say, "A legal birth certificate or any other acceptable record is required for enrollment age certification." Does this affect our population that may be undocumented that does come in, or how do we deal with around that?
It does, Mr. Tally, and we accept any documentation that's provided.
Okay.
We're very liberal about that documentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Mueller?
I have a question as well. It talked about the ability of kindergarten students to come in that have been identified as highly advanced gifted students. What is the mechanism for identifying those students?
Well, so, in some cases, it's, the parents have provided us information about that child that would indicate that that child should go ahead and start first grade rather than beginning kindergarten. But also, maybe they've been a part of our early childhood program, and they've been identified as twice exceptional in the early childhood program. So, we, this is new, and so, it's going to be exciting work for us to work hard to identify our littlest ones and bring them in.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We're now to our Innovation 2020 Update, Student Learning and Achievement Priority III Instructional Framework. One of the more exciting parts of our meeting, Dr. Pilch, and so, we're glad to get this report, and I'll give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I agree. You know, this is about the work we do in District 6 every single day, and I'm excited about the data you're going to see tonight in this report. It, we, this will demonstrate for you that having a strategic plan and having a strategic focus on the work does make a difference, and it does cause this school district to get results. And so, Mr. Lamos, Director of Instruction, and Dr. Dattery, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, are going to join us through Zoom, hopefully, to give this update. And I just want to say, unfortunately, Mr. Lamos and Dr. Dattery each have children who caused each of them to be quarantined. So, their quarantine has nothing to do with one another, but they're living through this COVID like the rest of us and are both quarantined. And one thing you should know about quarantine is, if you are not able to quarantine away from your child, you actually have to quarantine for the full 24 days, not just the initial 14 days. So, if your child is the one who is positive. So, this is, I know they would both rather be with us here tonight instead of coming in via Zoom, but we'll give it a shot.
Thank you, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, and members of the board. We are very pleased to be able to share with you the update, as Dr. Pilch stated, on instructional practices and supports that are making a difference in our district for our students within Priority III of Innovation 2020 and Student Learning and Achievement. All right. As we know, this is all a part of the greater mission and vision of our district, that every student deserves access to quality education that ensures he or she graduates high school and is ready for college and career. And additionally, we have a set of values that we all hold across the district, and those that we really closely felt aligned to the priority area that we are presenting to you tonight is that of knowing that every child can achieve, that we promote access and opportunity and choice across the district, and that we commit to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement in this work around instructional practices and student achievement. As we mentioned, there are four goal areas, but tonight we are really focusing on that of student learning and achievement. And Priority III, that is around implement an instructional framework that reflects both the art and science of teaching to ensure all students learn. Within that goal, there are four priorities, and tonight we will focus on Priority III. Excuse me, I apologize. Within that, we do have three different outcomes, and the outcomes that we measure will help us to know if we are achieving that priority area. The first two are in relation to the teacher evaluation process and teacher scoring proficient or higher. And then, the third is in relation to English as a second language, and that 75% of our students will be fluent English proficient within five years. There are also three objectives in Priority III, and they are included on this slide. The three big ideas of these objectives include a focus on development of an instructional framework to support all areas of instruction, development of a professional development plan that is differentiated and supports teacher practices in the classroom, and the development and then further implementation of our EL plan that provides direction and focus for EL students to achieve.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and thank you, members of the board. Two years ago, leaders from across the district came together and created our District 6 Instructional Framework for Excellence that defines and outlines quality learning elements in the classroom. It also articulates instructional system and provides coherent guides of work of teachers and staff, plus provides a tool for self-reflection for teachers. In our instructional framework, you'll find four categories within the framework, which includes environment, education, engagement, and evaluation. Within each category, there are three subcategories. As we move forward, we will continue to focus on these areas and make the clear connections with the current state teacher evaluation rubric in the areas of engagement and environment to support teachers and the social-emotional needs of all of our students in the district. As you might know, we've made some great strides in the area of instruction by clearly identifying quality learning elements in the classroom and providing professional development support for our instructional teams and buildings. Additionally, we integrated our high-yield pedagogical practices, blended learning, Avid strategies, and universal design for learning to help staff make a clear connection to an instructional framework. We developed resources with examples and links for teachers to efficiently review ideas and equitable practices for their own daily instructional lessons that help support differentiation and meet the needs of all our diverse learners in the district. This is linked to our instructional framework page for teachers and staff to access. Next slide, AP and IB courses are integral to our high school instructional programming, and we are grateful to our community for passing the MLLO, so that we are able to purchase consistent district resources that align with the College Board suite of online classroom supports, including unit guides, exams, descriptions for AP courses, and so forth. In the fall of 2019, AP teachers in economics, English Language Composition, English Literature and Composition, and the United States Government Politics began the process of evaluating resources, but due to the impact of COVID in March, the process was put on hold. The process was resumed in October, and the committee finished, and will bring the recommendations to the board in December of this year. Furthermore, the 2021 AP Curriculum Adoption Committee for AP Chemistry, AP Physics, AP Spanish Language, AP Seminar, and AP Research will begin the first week in December, work through the district curriculum process, and bring the final recommendation to the board in May of 2021. To support the new resources for AP courses, AP teachers will be provided with professional development around the outlined components of the resources and have continuous access to online professional learning as they utilize both the textbook and the digital platforms. The three District IB schools, Dos Rios, Brentwood, and Greeley West, continue to work together to increase awareness for students and parents of the opportunity to follow the IB pathway through the grade levels and to encourage enrollment into the diploma program at Greeley West. This is the third year of Avid Elementary implementation. In year one, six elementary schools implemented Avid. Last year, nine elementary schools implemented Avid. Due to the impact of COVID, which caused summer Avid training opportunities to be canceled, schools remained consistent and did not add grade levels for the 2021 school year, and onboarding for Cohort 3 was postponed. We anticipate onboarding Avid Elementary and K-8 Cohort 3 in the 2022 school year to continue next year. We have a continued focus on Avid implementation and support. All 20 Avid schools have a goal to increase collaboration opportunities for students. Amanda Krieger, our Avid District Coordinator, continues to provide monthly Avid professional learning opportunities throughout the 2021 school year. We continue to We continue to support students at the secondary level with Avid elective classes during the regular school day in Grade 6 through 12 and the Avid Excel class in Grade 6 through 8. Avid Excel is specifically designed for students who are identified as long-term English learners with a direct focus on academic language and academic writing in Grade 6 through 8. COVID-19 has impacted scheduling for the Avid elective and Avid Excel classes this year. As a result, some of our cohorts have been impacted. With scheduling issues, some schools are not able to offer Avid classes every quarter due to this impact. To continue our intentional focus on identifying more students in GT, and specifically those in the targeted areas, we will continue training at PD for all teachers in the identification process. Our identification target groups are students of color, students identified as twice exceptional, and students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. We are additionally connecting all students taking accelerated math courses online with the math specialists. This allows them to have deeper conversations in mathematics and applied math topics. This year, we have more students in online math courses, those who are full-time online as well as those who cannot travel to another school for their course due to COVID. The math specialist is an opportunity, we hope, to sustain beyond our current environment. The second outcome in this priority area focuses on supporting adult learners in the system through a robust professional development plan. A few highlights for adult learning includes our recent partnership with the University of Northern Colorado and the Colorado Department of Education to address the new CDE requirements of earning 45 hours of professional learning to meet the needs of culturally diverse learners. This partnership will provide an endorsement opportunity for our teachers. In addition, we continue to implement the co-teaching model with intentional professional development throughout, through both internal support and external consulting. Additionally, through a systematic process last spring, we moved to a new professional development platform, Power School, and are implementing this fully this school year. It provides a more robust platform for our teachers by embedding professional development offense and increases the effectiveness of adult learners. We are also supporting the new Read Act legislation requirement of completing 45 hours of literacy training by the fall of 2021 for all teachers who teach reading in Grades K through 3 by offering tutoring to help support passing the exam. And finally, we are providing several optional flexible professional learning opportunities for staff, given the changes in teaching and expectations they have, that they have encountered this fall. With the many demands teachers have faced, our team has created and provided differentiated opportunities for our staff. The third outcome is in relation to English learners. Several actions are leading to increased achievement for students, including professional development for teachers to further their implementation of high-yield pedagogical practices that support academic discourse and academic writing in the content area. Additionally, we have implemented progress monitoring processes for all students K through 12 who are learning English as a second language to monitor the growth and achievement of these students with language acquisition and academic success. Finally, we've continued our professional development support for all teachers and building teams by offering a variety of options and opportunities to help teachers develop collaborative structures that will support student output, equity of voice, and a sense of belonging in the classroom. With the support of our Westdeck consultants, we've continued our five-year master plan for EL success implementation, which we've implemented district-wide and met our I-2020 goal. We will continue our progress monitor and make sure our teachers, building teams, and students have their appropriate supports to meet the needs of our students by continuing our clear focus on academic discourse and academic writing in the content.
Thank you, Brian. So all of those of them, numerous actions that we've taken in this particular priority area, and as I mentioned, there are three outcome measures related to this priority. The first outcome measure of by 2018, 99% of teachers will score proficient or higher on the Professional Practice Teacher Effectiveness Evaluation Rubric has been achieved. And on the second outcome measure, it is very similar, but it did change slightly due to the change that occurred in the evaluation system. However, this outcome measure was achieved in the 1819 school year, and in the 1920 school year, we did not do, again, just with the changes of how the spring rolled out for our educators, we did not gather the spring data as we had in years prior and that outcome measure, and then certainly the professional practices and all of that did shift, so we did not collect the same level of data that we had in prior years. Finally, the third outcome measure of by 2023, 75% of students who are learning English as a second language will be fluent English proficient within five years, has not yet been achieved, it is still in progress, however, we are ever so close to meeting that, just within five tenths of a percent of a point, and we do believe that this trajectory within that 2023 timeline, we will definitely meet and likely exceed this outcome measure. To share a little bit of progress data with you, there's a few slides that we want to share with you that just help us to know if we are making progress on the actions that we have outlined for you and then leading them toward the outcome measures. So this slide shows the progress data that we are making toward the number of AP scholars. The number of AP scholars has actually remained fairly consistent over the past several years, and the 2020 data is especially encouraging because all of our AP exams this last year switched to an online format rather than in person, of course, because of the changes that happened with COVID. And so based on the 2020 AP exam results, 50 students were awarded the AP Scholar designation for receiving a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Thirteen students earned an AP Scholars with Honors designation for earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all the AP exams that they took, and scores of three or higher on four or more of those AP exams. So it's a very difficult thing, and we had 13 students do that. Additionally, 21 students received the AP Scholars with Distinction designation for earning an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. Four students also received a National AP Scholar designation for earning an average score of at least a four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more AP exams. It's just phenomenal that they took that many and that they did that well, and so four of our students received that designation. Additionally, that's not on here, is just to share with you that one student from Greeley Central, five students from Northridge High School, earned an AP Seminar and Research Certificate for earning scores of three or higher in both the AP Seminar and AP Research exams. And two students from Northridge High School earned the AP Capstone Diploma, which is wonderful, for earning a score of three or higher in AP Seminary and AP Research, and on four additional AP exams of the students choosing. So just some really great recognitions, our students worked really hard and really performed well and succeeded with those AP exams through to the end of the year.
As noted in the progress data, Avid graduates continue to do well, and this past graduating year is no exception. Along with tracking the number of students who complete four-year college requirements, Avid also tracks the type of classes students take. As an Avid student, they are expected to participate in rigorous academic courses, and of the 2020 Avid seniors, 63% took at least one college course or dual enrollment course, while 98% took at least one AP or IB course. With 92.9% sitting for at least one AP or IB exam, which is up 6.5% from the class of 2019, where 86.4% sat for at least one AP or IB exam. Our Avid seniors are also encouraged to pursue financial aid opportunities, and 94% of the graduating Avid seniors submitted the federal financial aid form, with 63% planning to attend a four-year college or university, and 30% planning to attend a two-year college. In addition, 24% identified as English learners. This slide highlights the progress data in relation to the demographics of our gifted and talented students. As mentioned earlier, we're working on increasing the number of students who are identified as GT. This past year, we increased 171 students identified as GT, so we increased it by 171 students. Additionally, our goal is to have more students identified as GT to be more reflective of our district subgroup demographics. The rate of all students identified GT in Colorado is 7.3% compared to 4.7% in District Six, thus growth over the past year was 0.1%. In the past year, the rate of students identified as GT who also qualify for free and reduced lunches increased by nearly 5%. Additionally, we have increased by nearly 2% over the last year in students identified as ELs. Earlier, I shared the I-2020 outcome measure in relation to students being proficient within five years and stated that, given the current data trajectory, we will meet this outcome measure by 2023 and have met this goal or are close to meeting this goal today. 75% of our students, or 74.5% of our students, are on track. The progress data on this slide shows the percent of students who are on track to proficiency as calculated by the Colorado Department of Education and reported on district and school performance frameworks. The overall state average is 53.9% as compared to the overall district average of just under 53% of students being on track to proficiency. When disaggregated by level, 73% of our elementary students are on track exceeding the state average of 70%. 28% of our middle school students are on track compared to the state average of 31%. And at the high school, 21% of our students are on track compared to 28% at the state level. As a, as we think about this data, a direct area of celebration is that our elementary schools, on average, are progressing at a higher rate than the overall state average for the past two years. With continued work at the secondary levels, we will surpass the state average and ensure more of our students reach English language proficiency. This next slide is around Innovation 2030 recommendations. What we've identified for our English Language Initiative is continued training and support of the Master Plan for EL Success, which includes three main areas. Asset orientation, which directly aligns with our cultural proficiency and equitable instructional practices, professional development, in short, understanding the cultural backgrounds and strengths our students bring to the classroom. Number two, developing autonomy, continue having a strong progress monitoring system in place to ensure students are working toward conceptual understanding and can complete content tasks independently. And number three, opportunities to learn. Make certain that all English learner students have access to grade-level content. If students don't have access to grade-level content, then how can we expect our students to grow? We've done a tremendous job in this area at every school, giving students opportunities to learn. We think about gifted and talented, the two bullets are increased gifted and talented identification, as identified earlier, and really take advantage of language development as a new area of identifying students that could be identified as gifted and talented. The following are actions, our actions are team recommends to be included in the upcoming revised I-2030 strategic plan. These are high-level areas, and they include onboard Avid Elementary Cohort Three, as we explained, next year will be our opportunity to do that, but due to the COVID crisis, our pandemic, we held, we held back on that implementation this year, but we have full hope that that will happen in the 2122 school year. Continue professional development to support Avid's strategies across all Avid schools, increase Avid elective sections to at least two per grade level per school in Grade 6 through 12, and maintain Avid Excel sections to at least one per grade level in Grade 6 through 8.
And finally, there's just a few more things that we would recommend in Innovation 2030 as we think about advanced placement and international baccalaureate. First, really to focus on increasing access into both AP and IB for all of our students, and specifically focusing on students who are designated as learning English as a second or third language, as well as students with special needs, just really making sure that we are providing that access and opportunities for all students to be able to engage in those high-level classes. Additionally, we will focus on the increasing enrollment in the IP Diploma Program, specifically at Greeley West High School. We are doing some tremendous work in that area, but with some additional focus and with the new school being built and those opportunities, it will really be able to bring additional focus on increasing the enrollments. We're also putting some additional attention and focus on decreasing the gender gap that is in our advanced courses. One of the things that we have noticed over the last several years is that there, we have more females to males in our advanced courses, and really putting some specific actions in place that will address that gender gap and ensure, again, that all students are, and specifically are having access to that, specifically are male Latinos, ensuring that they are seeing themselves in these advanced classes, and across the board, we're decreasing that gender gap. And then finally, continuing the advanced program in curriculum adoption cycles. Again, we cannot thank our voters enough to be able to provide curriculum resources and continuing that adoption cycle and staying really current with what College Board is requiring in terms of resources and therefore instruction and supporting our students to be able to meet those expectations through the resources, with the use of the resources. And then finally, we have the instructional framework and continued work in this area, really stressing that while we have created and built an instructional framework and now integrated all these different aspects, as Brian noted earlier in her presentation, it's really helping our schools to be able to utilize that instructional framework to ensure that those practices, equitable instructional practices are being delivered throughout the system and in all classrooms, and so being able to utilize that tool in a really friendly way and in a supportive way and back and forth with teachers and in the classrooms. And then finally, professional development is really just that underpinning, as we know, that helps to support when those instructional practices come alive and we're doing the kinds of things for kids that really make a difference from the curriculum, the written curriculum into practice, it is supporting them through the professional development opportunities. And so knowing that, continuing to provide the training and support for our teachers to complete the 45 hours is critical for that CDE requirement in CLD. Additionally, we now have a requirement from CDE and from the legislation that we, that our teachers who teach students in K3 reading will need to complete 45 hours of literacy training, and so we want to be able to provide systems of support that will help them to gain those hours. And then through, in all of these different professional development opportunities, not only for CLD and literacy, but in all the other areas, to really utilize this new tool of Power School, which provides opportunities for teachers to access professional development on demand when they want it, as well as in face-to-face ways or virtual face-to-face ways, albeit in some cases, but really being able to be more dynamic with professional learning across the system. So we're very fortunate to be able to do that as well. So those are just a few of the recommendations in these particular areas that we know we will continue and want to focus on and further develop the work of instructional practices across the district. So with that, we will say thank you and open it up to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery, Mr. Lamos. I believe we have some questions, and I can't tell who got there first. We'll go with Mr. Tally first.
Thank you for the presentation, I love all the information. Yes, I have two questions, but first, I kind of just feel the need to say academics are super important, as we all know, I hope we all agree on that sitting here. But I also, I just feel the need to say, I'm really hoping that we don't neglect to also be mindful of what our students are going through and know that sometimes they may need a day, like I spoke earlier during our work session, that some staff need to make sure they're taking care of themselves, students also may require some time. They may be going through a lot at home, maybe worrying about where their next meal's going to come from, if they have heat at home tonight, things like that. So just hoping that teachers are mindful of that as we move through academics, especially in the time that we're in right now, that we don't push too hard to where we cause some disengagement. But on to my questions. My first question was around, we talk about increasing, hold on, I'm trying to regather my thoughts, increasing in our marginalized populations, so like our male Latinos and our students that are receiving special education services and things like that. Other than grade-level access, other than access to grade-level content, what are the action steps that we're doing to make sure that we target these populations? Or how are we getting them to engage, to be able to participate in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Tally, for the question and for the comments. There are several different actions, really, that schools take in a variety of different ways and depending on certainly the different grade levels and the supporting of students. But there's, a lot of it has been through the professional development, system-wide, just kind of on a broader scale, looking at that system-wide and knowing that, ensuring that we're providing the support from a co-teaching standpoint, from the different models that are implemented, and supporting our teachers to be able to provide that access to grade-level content and then supporting them with the strategies and the expectations of how can students engage in higher-level content. Advanced coursework is really, in large part, just that system-wide work that we've been engaging in and will continue. And then really thinking about, again, like I said, having schools think through, where are they in that continuum of support and continuum of implementation of those strategies? And how can they continue to provide the support for their teachers in their different buildings?
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Zalt's going to say that, including our professional development that we've been very, very focused on, it's also been our equity teams at each of our building sites. We're really looking at the data and we're really making awareness that this is an area of focus. And so the equity teams at each of our buildings and our sites is really making a focus in these areas.
Perfect, thank you. I guess my maybe more direct question is, what are we doing with the students to get them prepared? I know we're doing professional development with the staff and all of that, but are we doing any intentional, direct work with students now to sort of prepare them?
I think Avid is a great way to get support. We have tutoring support. We have a lot of communication to family engagement. As you know, that's a huge focus for us in our I-2020 and our I-2030. So it's a lot of working with families, getting them to really understand what all this means. And then also that, you know, relationship with students has been a very, very important piece of support for them, really understanding where the gaps are at, really understanding where the strengths are at, and then really helping encourage them and then put the supports in place, such as Avid and tutoring and all those other pieces that we know are very important to academic success. There also are differentiated scaffolds that teachers are involved in to make sure that they understand that it's just as important, we can have access, but we need to make sure that there's equitable instructional practices there to help those students be successful.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Ms. Pappas, I think is next.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and thank you for presenting from home. So I do have a question about the English language learners. I think we see some good data as far as elementary students reaching that proficient level in that five years. And I feel like when we made the effort to bring in WestEd and do the grade-level app, making sure that every student has access to grade-level content, we still have students in middle school and high school that were kind of, were stuck in places in elementary school. So I'm just making the assumption that part of what Mr. Lemos just talked about with Avid and instructional practices, that's being very focused and intentional in middle school and high school as well, which I appreciate. I do wonder, do you have a sense of how our English language learners are either participating in-person classes or online? Or do we have a sense of the numbers and how their specific, how these specific strategies might be reaching them if they're not in person? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So there's a couple of things, and I'll just kind of start, and then Brian, anything that I might leave out, just jump in. Some of the things that we're intentionally doing. And I think there just needs to be additional recognition that our teachers are figuring this out as they go and just honoring that they're learning in this very different environment, both whether it is in an online environment or an in-person where their, you know, different environments are set up for them, as well as if they go remote. And so when we are in these different learning modalities, one of the support systems that we have put in place includes an EL advocate who is able to reach out and to support teachers, as well as supporting students to actively engage and families to ensure that that engagement is happening in the home when those remote times might come into play or with our online learners. So that's one way in which we're really supporting our students to be more actively engaged in those environments. Additionally, just really knowing that Avid Excel, as you mentioned earlier, at the middle level, is really supporting our middle-level students. That has been a very meaningful strategy and support system that we have put into place. And so there's really a lot of strategies and things that we have been working on, co-teaching implementation, that many of our teachers have still continued to implement in this environment and supporting our EL learners very specifically as they navigate this year in a different way.
Thank you. And then I have one other question about the 45 hours of literacy training for the Read Act. So I'm making an assumption that, as you look at individual teachers, they're able to look at their past classes that can be addressed in this? Or is this an additional 45 hours of literacy training?
Yes, thank you, Teri. There's a whole lot of new that's coming down the pike, and we're learning as the Colorado Department of Education has been sharing this information with us. There is, there are some past courses and certificates, licenses that teachers hold currently that do fit the criteria of what the Colorado Department will approve for this new requirement. It's very few and far between. We actually have very few teachers that have already met that requirement. And in large part, it's not just the courses that they take, but they have to actually complete an exam to show the proficiency in early literacy skills. And so many courses that maybe a teacher has taken in the past or professional learning opportunities that teachers have engaged in in the past will not suffice for this new requirement. So many of our teachers are needing to take either new classes. We've been working with our local Greeley Education Association as they have been putting, working with CEA to provide courses with an end-of-course exam that meets the requirement of CDE. And there's a few other ways and pathways that teachers can engage in to meet that requirement.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Pappas, I would like to add for the board that one of the letters I've signed recently is a letter to the State Board of Education, along with several other superintendents, asking that this requirement be postponed and not actually be enacted in this school year because of everything that's coming at our teachers in light of a pandemic.
Right, well, thank you for that.
Mr. Haley.
Dr. Dattery and Mr. Lemos, I hope that your loved ones get healthy soon. So we're glad you're here this evening, thank you very much. I have way too many questions, and I apologize. When you talked about high-yield pedagogical practices, are you referencing a certain philosophy? Or are you using it from a wide variety of resources that you all have created as lessons for our educators?
Thank you. Mr. Haley, I'm actually going to turn that over to Brian, that is. The work that he's been engaging in very closely for the last couple of years, so he can share a little bit more about the high-yield pedagogical practices. You're muted, though, Brian.
All right, thank you. I think they see that quite a bit to me. So Board Member Haley, basically, our focus is on academic discourse and academic writing. And we're figuring, we really have some intense training around, how do we do collaborative structures to really, really help teachers get students to engage in academic discourse, meaning they're talking the content language, they're writing about the content language. We know to write like a scientist is much different to write like a language arts, you know, a person writing a novel. So our focus is on really doing intensive, you know, planning around, how do we get students to really collaborate with one another and use academic language? And then put those thoughts on the paper. So truly, student output is what we're looking for. We had a really good start with our EL Master Plan, and now we have really taken that and moved it forward in all areas, whenever we're thinking about Avid, whenever we're thinking about math. This is our driver, academic discourse, academic language. We know it's not only good for EL students, but we also know it's good for all students. One of the number-one indicators for students dropping out at the college level is the writing demand. And so we know it will be good for all students, and it's a great focus for our teachers, and it's been something that has been well, well-received, and they're doing a tremendous job. We're positioned very well, not only with elementary, but now with our high school.
Thank you. I would agree with that. I think it dovetails well with WICHER, with the writing, the inquiry, the collaboration, as well as the reading that we see in Avid, and I think that's really important. When you talked about the universal lesson plans, could you tell me what that is? And are all of our educators expected to have a cookie-cutter approach to their lesson plans?
Yeah, basically, in, you know, really, the universal design for learning is really around making accommodations to the environment of the learning. So there are certain things, certain accommodations that need to take place for students, such as maybe a student that might have, that might be, you know, hearing impaired. They're going to need certain things so that they can have access to the teacher and what the teacher is saying. So it's just really being intentional about knowing your students, being aware of what are some of the strengths that they come with, but also some of the areas that they're going to need support. And what are those environmental changes that you can make? Those accommodations that you can make within the learning environment that will give all students access?
Yeah, that's really important, the idea of relationships and knowing your students is what drives success. And this is my yearly rant about Avid, how I think it's my favorite program in the district, and I think not only for students, but as well as our educators. I think that it shows that all students can be successful, and, you know, and it's now inclusive as opposed to exclusive, and congratulations to all. My last question is, similar to Ms. Pappas, you know, we've done really, really well with our English learners at the elementary school. Congratulations to them. Is, are we still waiting for those young people to filter into high school for success? And I know we're working with the high school students as well, but is that how we're speeding up the five years as opposed to seven years to be literate and to be functionally able to speak correctly?
Go ahead, yeah.
I think that it's both, right? That we do have a group of students that are definitely coming in that are going to be on that trajectory path a little bit sooner, and that's pretty evident in our data. But our middle school students and our high school students are still focused, and that focus is academic discourse and academic writing. How do we continue to provide instructional strategies, instructional intentionality with collaborative structures for the middle school students and for our high school students? And if we can do that, language acquisition will increase. And we're, like I said, we have a lot to celebrate, and we are in a great position to see that data continually move forward, not only with the students that are coming, but this year's students at middle school and high school.
And I have faith in our students as well as our teachers. Thank you very much.
I have just a couple of questions for you guys. First, some great news, it looks like, on the percentage of ELL students that are becoming fluent. That's amazing to move from 50, roughly 51% to 75% in the last few years. And equally, kudos on increasing the free and reduced lunch. Kids that are being identified as GT, that's exciting to see as well, that number move. And thank you for addressing the gender gap. I know I've asked about that for several years, and I appreciate you guys being mindful of that and paying attention to that. I did just have some questions on Avid. And that is, just those numbers, both Avid and maybe the way Avid relates to AP, we're not seeing, or I don't see a lot of difference in the numbers in 2020 and in 2016 on our Avid numbers. Should I be seeing a difference on those numbers? And/or is this just what it is? Is this successful as a program? I know we believe it's successful. Everything that I hear says it's successful. But if that's so, why are we not growing that in terms of the number of students in Avid?
Well, I would say that we, I would tell you that it has been a very, it has been a very successful program. And I think when we look at our progress data, we have, we are in over 90% in several of those areas. And so once we get to those levels of, you know, those target areas and hitting that for our students, we really notice how many of our students are benefiting from this program, year after year after year. That said, we won't stop until we get to that 100% for all, in all of those categories. And so we continue to put systems in place in the Avid elective classes and in Avid school-wide, now in our elementaries and then further in our middle schools, that really support all of our students to be successful in all of their coursework, which is really what Avid is about. It's really ensuring that students have the, all of the tools in their toolbox so that they can be successful in school, and they can navigate their coursework, and they can have access to all those higher-level classes, just like any other student, and to be able to provide that opportunity for them. I do, I do notice that, and we did notice this last year, and as we moved into this current school year, while we had been moving forward each year with more and more of our students in Avid elective classes at the high school. This year, with the changes in our high school scheduling, certainly that did impact, and that set us back just a little. But everybody understands what that's about in those high schools and with our students, and they are continually striving, not only for this current school year to continue to support students in more of those Avid classes, but really thinking forward and how they will continue to support students beyond just this school year and into the school years to come for our students. So I think as Avid has, we've been able to see that Avid is not just at the secondary level, but moving it into the elementaries has really been a benefit to our entire system and for our students.
President Matthews, I'll just add that behind this data that is shared with you related to Avid, there are pages and pages of data that we provide to Avid National. And it is that data that actually qualifies Greeley West to be a demonstration site. It's that data that they're tracking to make sure that our middle schools and other high schools are advancing the way that Avid would expect them to, to be called an Avid school. So although these numbers haven't changed much, and as Stacy indicated, you probably wouldn't expect them to change very much, it's really the numbers in the background that are really significant around Avid. And, you know, we can certainly talk about how, a way to share that. I mean, it's a pretty complex data reporting system that Avid requires of us, simply to be a part of the name, Avid.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, obviously, you can't, it's 98% completed a four-year college requirements, the four-year college requirement. So that's not going to go up very much. I'm just wondering if it is successful, is there a way to get more kids into this program? Or is, you know, is it just going to be a program for 100 kids or 100 graduates each year?
So what we, we do see, the numbers have declined slightly just this past year. I mean, it's, I think that's a great question, especially when you look at the population that we serve. But if you think about each- that we serve. So you, but you're thinking, but if you think about each grade level and about 100 kids at each grade level, you're actually serving, you know, 400 to 450 students total across our high schools at any given time, which is, which is, you know,
Significant.
Half of our students-ish, yeah. It's a big number. It's a fourth of our students. It's a big number. And I will also say this, the high schools especially would absolutely offer more Avid classes. It's, it's a resource piece. I mean, they, they would offer far more numbers of Avid sections if we, if we had the resources to, to bear them to do that.
Okay.
It's a great point.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for, for answering that. Appreciate it. I don't know if I have any more questions. Let me check and see. I have to, have to check my phone to see if we're getting everybody's questions answered. It looks like we do have all, all our questions answered. Thank you guys so much for, for the presentation. It's always great to see the progress that we're making each and every year in the district around academics and how we're serving our kids. So thank you both. Thank you, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is a property purchase. We'll wait. See if we can get us back on the-
We still have Brian's face on the screen.
And kudos to Mr. Check too for pulling that off. That's, that's pretty amazing. We can meet in person and you guys can be at your homes and hopefully it looks as clear for our viewers as it did for us.
We were a little touch and go. I'll just add, as, as you all know, we thought this whole meeting might be remote because the numbers of us last week who were under some, a little bit of quarantine while we waited for some test results to come back with some of us having been exposed. But so that, those of you who might have noticed that we were in person and then we posted remote and went back to in person was because of, of the changers and just quarantine status. So I'm wondering if Chief of Communications, Ms. Myers, can check on this? I think somebody needs to hit end meeting for all in relation to that meeting, the Zoom meeting. There we go. Hopefully we're still broadcasting to our community.
Oh, it looks like we're back now.
Looks like we're back.
And it is pretty amazing what we're able to do now. I can't imagine us being able to do that a year ago.
We've learned a lot.
But we, we're all adjusting very quickly. So our next item of business is a property purchase, another exciting part for our, of our business meeting.
You skipped one.
Oh, I'm skipping one. Sorry. Always do that. We have District Evaluation Council membership. Thanks, guys. That is our next item. And so this is an action item that I think-
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the membership of the District Evaluation Council as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there, well, Dr. Pilch, I'll give this to you to, to tell us more about this before we open it up for comments.
Thank you, President Matthews. This comes before you as a requirement of state law as well as a requirement of our master teacher contract. And Mrs. Overton, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, will walk you through this.
Good evening, Mr. Matthews and members of the board. Dr. Pilch, as our superintendent had said, we are here tonight to celebrate the work of the Evaluation Council. This council is co-chaired by the Greeley Evans Association, Greeley Education Association President, Andy Lee, and the Director of Human Resources, Amy Spruce. Each year, they meet several times to discuss topics related to certified evaluations. This year, we've been discussing waivers for online observations, piloting a new rubric for instructional coaches, and how to fairly evaluate teachers outside of their content area. We have a diverse committee from teachers, administrators, principals, district leaders, and community member as well represented. You may remember the big shift in evaluation in 2010 called Senate Bill 191. This is where this originated from. It's called educator effectiveness. And this is then moving from educator effectiveness and the initial implementation to using Bloomboard about five, six years ago, and then finally using the RANDA Performance Management System. Now, throughout this implementation, GEA and Human Resources ensure that the evaluation process is collaboratively designed and implemented. I would like to thank the members of the committee for their dedication, their efforts, and their creative thinking. Here are the people who serve in this way. Zachary Armstrong, Ron Anderson, Jessica Ozia, Andrew Palmer, John Schultler, Annette Sandoval-Klein, Jeffrey Cranston, Wes Tuttle, Kelly Kennedy, Jenny Jensen, Andy Lee, and Amy Spruce. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members about the, Ms. Solis?
I don't have a question, but just another thank you. Again, we're putting more stuff on people's plates. And, you know, I see teachers in there, principals in there. So just thank everyone for being a part of this. I know it's an extra thing that they have to do.
I will. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Ms. Mash.
Sorry. I was just curious. I see that we approve this annually, but does a person serve more than one year or is that going to have to them?
They do. It's represented in the master contract. The GEA and district administration can choose who the committee members are. And we look at it on an annual basis. Some people serve multiple terms and some are there for only one year. But we do, we collaboratively work together to build the team.
Any other questions from board members?
Thank you.
I'll just echo, echo that. Thanks to these, to these teachers and administrators. We appreciate the, the extra service and all these different committees that, that are doing work behind the scenes and making sure that, that things run smoothly in the district. We greatly appreciate the extra time and energy. So thank them for us, please.
Thank you. Will do.
Now we're to, oh, we got to vote. Sorry. I keep, I keep trying to get this done sooner than, than we're supposed to. We need to vote on, on this. So Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Now, I do believe we're to the property purchase for the future school site. And this is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the property purchase contract and authorizes Chief Financial Officer, Megan Sponsler, to sign related documents on behalf of the Board of Education.
Second.
Thank you all. Dr. Pilch, would you like to give us some more information on this before we-
Thank you, President Matthews. So this property is a parcel to the west of Prairie Heights. So if you think of Prairie Heights and go west, it's not the immediate adjacent 15 acres. It's the next parcel over from there. And it's currently bank owned. We were able to make an offer and pick up 15 acres as part of this contract. I'll just remind you that this is a part of our, our work with our facility master plan and to secure land within our Greeley Evans School District boundary for future school sites. And we, I should probably also share, there's land adjacent to Prairie Heights that is owned by the City of Evans. So we, of course, we're partnering with them to determine the best use of this land and how we all might benefit from, from these two parcels together. We could see the possibility of, of an elementary school or another secondary school out there. We do know that in our long-term plan, we do plan for a high school at, a small high school at some time in, within the Evans area.
We'll open it up for some questions from board members. Mr. Hayfley.
Thank you very much for your vision. I mean, we, we were behind the eight ball as we tried to find land this last year. And I appreciate you getting out in front of this and you deserve lots of credit. Did you have, who was assisting you in doing this? Was it the City of Evans or was it realtors or?
Uh, Mr. Hayfley, we have, there's a team of us here and really the team does far more than I do, but a, a team of Assistant Superintendent Ken Henson, Chief Finance, Financial Officer, Megan Sponsler, and then Finance Director Mandy Hydock, and, and working very closely with Brian Bartels.
Okay.
Um, he's, he's helped us to identify land parcels and, and begin to secure those. And then Mr. Henson is working with the City of Evans also to make them aware of our intentions and, and to build that relationship so we can work, you know, in a positive way forward with them.
You know, thanks, thanks to your staff, but I think we ought to consider bringing Mr. Bartels in and thanking him because I know he's worked tirelessly behind the scenes. And, and sometimes we need to bring him to the front and say, you know, we appreciate what you've done.
Yeah, he's, he has, he has been great for us.
Yeah, so-
He's really, he is a huge advocate for District Six and is, is looking out for us all the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mash, did you have a question?
No, I'm trying to pull it up on a map.
Okay.
But it's, it's, I don't know if there would be possible for us to see a map of, I mean, not right now, but I'd be curious where exactly it is.
Yeah, we will get that out in your weekly bulletin, guys.
Ms. Mueller.
Uh, Dr. Pilch, can you refresh my memory of how big of a parcel do we need for the different levels of schooling to build a school?
Sure. At elementary, you want at least 15 acres. I mean, that's, that's typical for elementary K-8. You want to go a little bit bigger if you're going to do some fields and things. But you get to a high school, you want, you want 50 acres or so to do a high school.
Thank you.
I'm checking my, my phone friend in the back room. Yeah. And yet, we have put schools on very small parcels at times in this community. So.
Are there any other questions from board members on this one? Well, not seeing any. Dr. Pilch, I'd just echo Mr. Hayfley's thanks to you and to your team and to Mr. Bartels for, for arranging this. And it's great to see. It's great to know that we have land available for, for that next bond issue, whenever, whenever that, that may be, whenever it is, we're ready to build another school. So it's exciting.
Thank you to the board for supporting us and doing that.
Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote on this, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our last item is public participation regarding non-adjacent items. And I don't believe we have any one this evening. And so that does it for us tonight. Thank you to everyone. Thanks for joining us online if you did. This meeting is adjourned.